Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, August 28th, and this is the regular meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. We begin every meeting by reciting the pledge of allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please start the agenda?
The Compton Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.na.gov. The agenda I'm wanting to approve the minutes of the board of commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018.
Move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion or corrections? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two, our claims approval of all claims processed through August 28th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a special presentation, Lancaster County Visitors Improvement Fund Grant of $120,000 to the City of Lincoln for the Prairie Corridor Trail. Lynn Ireland, Lancaster County Visitors Promotion Committee Chair, Jeff Maul, Lincoln Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Director, and Nicole Fleck Tuze, Special Project Administrator in Lincoln Parks and Recreation.
Good morning. A wonderful big red week welcome and good morning to all of you. It's certainly an exciting time for Lincoln. We're in game week, so we're excited to welcome a lot of new visitors back to our community, people that haven't been to us for a few years for obvious reasons, and we're excited about Husker football season and tourism in general. So today, we're here to talk about the Prairie Corridor Haynes Branch request of the Visitors Promotion Committee from our meeting earlier this month. With me today, I have Lynn Ireland, our Chair of the Visitors Promotion Committee. I can certainly say that from an executive director's position with the convention and Visitors Bureau, anytime we improve trails, whether it be for running events or leisure or walking and nature, it's a good thing for Lincoln and Lancaster County. So we were very excited to see this request. This is not the first time we've seen a request from this organization as far as parks and rec goes, so it is a good time for tourism in Lincoln and a good time for the trails. So with that, I will hand it over to Lynn Ireland.
We were pleased to review this proposal from City Parks and Recreation and were impressed by the partnership that that organization has put together. The Visitors Promotion Committee, after a thoughtful debate, recommended that this request be funded in the amount of $120,000. That would be three $40,000 payments over the next three-year period. And it is also, the award is contingent on the receipt of a Nebraska Environmental Trust grant in the amount of $900,000. And Nicole has all the details.
Good morning. Nicole Fleck Tuze with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Thanks very much for having us here today. Just give you a very brief overview about the project and answer any questions that you have. I've got a couple of images for the Elmo here. If we could switch over there. So I think you're all familiar with the Prairie Corridor and Haynes Branches project. The county has been a great partner in this project since its inception. We really got going with implementation in 2013. One of the things that we've been trying to describe a little bit about for context is looking at the City of Lincoln and Omaha communities and thinking about how, what those growth areas are, this is growth areas up to the year 2060. And you can imagine that over time, we're going to see a lot of growth along that I-80 corridor and connectivity and looking at those metropolitan areas. And this is something special that Lincoln has to offer. You can see that for context, the Haynes Branch Prairie Corridor highlighted there. One of the things that precipitated this was the development of the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan where we looked at this interlinking system of greenways and trails and the interconnectivity of the Haynes Branch Prairie Corridor and of course, the special feature offered there by Remnant Tallgrass Prairie. So when we look at the Prairie Grass Corridor, one of the things to remember is that this interconnects with our entire greenway and trail network. Generally, it'll be about a 10-mile trail round trip from Pioneer's Park Nature Center down to Spring Creek Prairie Audubon Center with a connection out to Conestoga Lake. Ultimately, the entire corridor goes from just south of Spring Creek Prairie all the way to the confluence with Haynes Branch, and of course, that's where the Bison Trail connects up with the rest of the trail network. So there were three main pillars that we've identified as part of this project. Conservation and habitat development is one, trail and economic opportunity is another, and then education outreach and research. And we've been working with UNL on a research component. Since the project started, over 800 acres have been conserved through the purchase of land and easements. And we've, the enhancement work that we have done has included the reestablishment of High Diversity Tallgrass Prairie on over 100 acres. And importantly for this group, we've completed about three miles of trail out to the western boundary of Pioneer Park. And we envision this being completed in a series of segments. The funding that we look at from the county, of course, we're looking at the economic opportunity. And we did ask Eric Thompson with the Bureau of Business Research to do a study on the benefits of this corridor over time and ultimately found that there were significant benefits. About 14 and a half percent of trail visits will result in a lodging night, as he's projected. And annual spending by overnight visitors would be about 1.84 million, but all visitors about 3.7 million annually, so pretty significant. When the day trip spending is included and the multiplier is added, he found the direct economic impact on Lancaster County of the project when it's at its fruition would be projected to be about 4.3 million annually. So we are expecting some significant benefits. And one of the great things about the funding visitor improvement funds from the county is that it helps us leverage other funds. We're about to apply for an environmental trust grant, a three-year grant, as Lynn mentioned, for $900,000 over three years. The county funds also help us to leverage funds for the recreational trail program, and we're working on the next segment. We'll start kind of at the other bookend at the south and Pioneer's, or rather, Spring Creek Prairie Audubon Center. So we feel like there's a lot happening. We've amassed enough land rights to proceed with various segments of the trail, and that's what the county's funds would be going toward. And available for any questions you have.
Any questions for Nicole or Lynn or Jeff? Nicole, I'm going to repeat my question from Sunday just because I think it's of interest to folks, which is can you describe the tax impact of this project as it moves forward?
Yeah, it's a great question. So as we move forward, there are kind of two different methods where we're looking at for land rights. One is the purchase of fee simple property and the other, the purchase of conservation easements and public access easements for the trail. It's all a voluntary incentive-based approach, working with landowners, and so which approach we take depends on the landowner interest and which piece it is. In terms of taxes, all the privately-held lands like Spring Creek Prairie Audubon Center, they all pay taxes. For when we use NET grant funds, even the public agencies pay in lieu of taxes on those properties that are acquired with NET funds. And then conservation easements remain in public, or rather, in private ownership and taxes are paid on those properties.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read the related item 5C?
This is under new business, Lancaster County Visitors Improvement Fund Grant Contract, when Lancaster County is the sponsor and the City of Lincoln is the grantee for the Prairie Corridor Trail Project in the amount of $40,000. The grant term is January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. The grant contract may be renewed for two additional one-year terms at $40,000 per term for a total grant of $120,000. The sponsor will sign a letter of support for the grantees' project.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right, thank you for being here. Now, we're going to open up a public hearing on the budget-related items for the next fiscal year. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the first item?
The first public hearing, this is 4A, is Keno Fund Projects. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right. Good morning. Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget and Fiscal Officer. Today, first hearing deals with the Keno Fund, and really, the reason we do the public hearing on the Keno Fund separate is because when we got into Keno Funds years ago, the resolution kind of included that as part of the package, that we would discuss each project every year going into it. The resolution also includes in there that we will only spend the money after we've received it. So when we start talking about that, you will see what our fund balance was at the beginning of the year, and that's the dollar amount that we will be talking about, what we're spending for this year. Now, any type of action that we take is then wrapped into the adoption of the budget, so we do a separate budget hearing, but then, when we adopt the final budget, it takes the Keno Fund into effect. So on the Keno Fund budget for this year, I'll just kind of quick go over the items that we're talking about. We're budgeting $60,000 for prevention grants, and that really is set up through the process where 5% of receipts will go there. So every year, 5% is set aside and moved off for prevention grants. We've got a $50,000 number in there for updating our website, and we're in the process. An RFP went out. We've received the information back, and the committee now is looking at it, so that's kind of where we're at in the process. The East Beltway has a little over a $2.2 million number set aside for that, and that's an increase of about $577,000. We're trying to build that up, so when activity takes place, we've got the funding sitting there to pay for pieces of property, things like that. Roadside Memorial is a new item there this year, and that came up, and so we've got 1,500 bucks set aside there. And then, the transfer to the general fund, we've got two items, and we'll talk about them a little bit when we do our budget hearing, but we're transferring $130,000 from our Keno back to our general fund to cover the bridge funding as well as a human services intern. And like I said, we'll talk about that a little bit more during the budget hearing. Last item in here is a $500,000 number that I've kind of labeled sinking fund, future I'll show you those types of projects, but what we're trying to do is, we're trying to take maybe a little more proactive approach to some of the projects that we know that are coming down the road, so that when we get down that road, we don't have five of them staring us in the face, and now we're trying to figure out, how are we going to actually pay for these? So we're trying to set something up to go there. $500,000 number is our start. You might think that's a big number, but wait till I show you the projects that are coming. So this is kind of the start of it, but there's no doubt we need more to be there. Then, the last thing before I talk about those projects just a little bit, you will see that our budget really agrees, that little less than $3 million number agrees to what our fund balance was. I do budget 1.25 million to come in for this year, but we don't budget to spend that because of our resolution. I'm setting that in cash reserve. Then, when we're back next year doing this Keno budget again, we'll talk about what we've actually brought in, and that's what we'll kind of work with. So I'll go to the next information, and these are the future projects. So, you know, not only do we want, are we setting $500,000 aside, but we're also wanting to kind of let everybody know, what are we talking about? What are we dealing with? So when you go down the line here, you'll see technology upgrades versus building projects or equipment, some of the larger items that are out there. One of them is an upgrade to SEJUS, which is a criminal justice information system. It's technology that needs to be upgraded, and right there, we're talking a $1.5 million number. You know, down the road somewhere, we've also got voting machines, equipment out at the election commissioner that we're projecting out, and that's about a $2.5 million number. So we do have, we do have some large projects that are kind of lingering out there right now. You know, technology is always great until you have to keep upgrading that stuff. So, you know, the items that we will be dealing with on more of a current basis is we're trying to get a fleet management system set up as well as, and I'll talk a little bit about this in the budget hearing too, is that we're moving to a new HR payroll system, and we're still in the process. We're kind of in the early start of that, so when we start talking about time clocks and scheduling, some of that, we don't know exactly what that means, but we know that we're going to have to address something. So we included that on here, so, you know, this is the start of our list. Is it all-inclusive? Maybe at this point in time, but it will change, you know, on an ongoing basis. So that's kind of what we're trying to, trying to plan for.
Okay. Any questions for Dennis? All right. Are there any members of the public that want to testify on the Keno Fund Projects portion of the proposed budget? All right, seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the public hearing and start item B, Mr. Clerk.
This is Lancaster County's proposed budget for fiscal year 2018 through 2019.
Do you swear me in again, or am I good?
Let's go ahead and swear again. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay, Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget and Fiscal Officer, again. Now, we're talking budget stuff. So a lot of this information that I will go over today is, this information's out on my webpage. It just kind of, a few items that I keep out on my webpage is, when the proposed budget was filed by July 31st, that document is out there. This is kind of a summary that I put together for the budget hearing. That information is out there, and then, once we adopt the budget document, that document will also be out there. So anybody wanting to look at budget stuff?
It's out there.
It's out there. So, so let's kind of talk about the highlights for the 2018-2019 budget. The budget was completed using the property tax rate of 26.6576. That is the same tax rate that was levied last year for the county. We projected a 4.3% increase in valuation. The actual valuation came in at 4.87%. So with that additional increase, that additional increase will generate an additional $386,275. And at this point in time, this additional revenue is being set up to be transferred to the Bridge and Special Road Fund to be used for bridge projects. So we'll talk about that a little bit more, but that's kind of what we're doing with the additional increase in valuation. One of the other items that I always like to talk about is inheritance tax side of things. You know, during 2017-2018, we received about $5.1 million in inheritance tax. Lancaster County uses that inheritance tax, and we put it into the general fund to cover operations. So by doing that, or if we wouldn't have done that, it would have been additional two cents that we would have had to levy for on the property tax side. The one thing that we need to remember is that the county does not receive any type of sales or income tax. So when we get back to a couple of these graphs, you will see we rely on property tax at a pretty high level. So inheritance tax is at about a two-cent levy amount, so it no doubt does help the taxpayers out in Lancaster County. Total budget for Lancaster County this year is going to be set at about $192.2 million. That is an increase of about 3.83% from last year. Total amount of property tax is going to be at about $71.1 million. Fund balances. Fund balances overall for the county increased by about $6.2 million, but the general fund, which you will hear about, decreased by about $2.3 million. So those fund balances really come into play, and as we talk about our general fund, you'll see, you know, how that really kind of affects, you know, the property tax side also. So when you look at the total of our general fund, our budget increased right at about $2 million, which is at a 1.78% increase. When you look at the property tax, our property tax and our general fund's increasing by about 3.3 million. And so that's not only covering those additional expenditures of the $2 million, but also helping out in the decrease of our general fund balance. So any type of fluctuation in that balance goes straight into what drives some of our property tax. Part of our, part of our general fund budget deals with transfers out. You know, we collect money in the general fund, and then we transfer out to the Bridge and Special Road Fund, the Highway Fund, Crisis Center, workers' comp, all other different types of funds. And so it becomes, it becomes a pretty good-sized number. Now, the transfer to our Bridge and Special Road Fund and the Highway Fund will be at about $10.8 million. That $10.8 million is an increase by that $386,275 that I talked about on the increase in valuation. Otherwise, we were going to keep the transfer at the same amount that it was last year. Crisis Center, we're increasing it by $156,425, and that's mostly due to just timing of collecting Medicaid. Hopefully, at some point in time, we're able to catch back up, but for cash flow purposes, we're going to need to transfer an additional dollar amount over there. Workers' Comp, we're going to need to transfer an additional $150,000 this year. Workers' Comp, we're about as self-insured as you can be, so basically, what happens is, when the activity increases, it affects fund balance, it affects everything. So when you're self-insured, we're basically covering all costs. So due to prior-year activity, we're going to need to transfer $150,000 more this year. One thing that is helping offset our transfers is, this year, there's no transfer to the building fund. The million dollars was transferred last year, and our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, will be completed this year. Payroll costs, payroll costs actually are increasing at just about 2%. Health insurance costs are actually remaining flat this year, and you do not get to hear that from me very often, that we're able to keep health insurance costs flat, but again, we're self-insured on the health insurance, and the last calendar year was actually a good year for us, so it gives us the ability to kind of control those numbers a little bit more. The proposed budget does include funding in additional 11 positions, and when I get down here a little bit further, you'll kind of see how we're kind of staggering some of those positions in throughout the fiscal year. Some of the other items that have taken place in our general fund, legal services. Last year, the county board decided to approve a revised contract with legal aid. Legal aid comes in and represents, you know, parents and juveniles, and the rate that they had been using to provide those services, the county was getting an excellent rate on that. It only made sense to increase that rate a little bit. That's going to be about another $213,000. On the JBC side, an additional $100,000 was put into the funding, and the board also approved $50,000 for a therapist at Cedars, and we've, we're putting aside $100,000 for funding at the bridge. And then, I talked a little bit about, in the Keno, the HR payroll system, you know, it's been about 25 years. Our system is, we're getting as close to it being taken away from us, then we've made the decision, it's time to make that move now, so we're in the process, and we're just kind of really getting started. We've got a vendor, we're, you know, they're in now, and we're starting to get the process moving here. Okay, a couple other budgets that I've noted items for is, you know, we've already talked a little bit about the Bridge and Special Road Fund and the Highway Fund, and how the dollar amount that's going to be transferred over there is going to increase by that $386,000. But if you go out to the budget numbers, you will see the budget numbers between those two funds are increasing by approximately $5.2 million more than what it was last year. The way that that is able to be accomplished is, last year, we had about $4 million sitting aside in cash reserve for future projects. Well, a couple of those future projects are now going to actually happen this year, so we've moved it from cash reserve to now, to our spending authority, so it then just kind of bumps it up because the money is already sitting there. We've also had some prior-year projects that were not completed during the previous year budget, so again, we've always got to have the spending authority, so we've got to rebudget it to spend it. You know, the other thing that I just, that I'll just also mention is, you know, Lancaster County has created a task force to address the ongoing infrastructure needs, and, you know, they're getting close to finalizing, so we'll be discussing that down the road And then, Keno Fund, we really kind of talked about that in the previous. So let's, let me just show you a few different graphs here, just to kind of show you where we're kind of at and what's kind of happening with the budget. First one here just kind of shows you where the levy's at, where it's been. First one here just kind of shows you where the levy's at, where it's been, and this will show you the 26.6576. We've been there the last couple of years, and you'll just see the years before that, we just kind of worked our way back down after using partial RTSD. Increase in valuation versus the increase in property tax. This one just kind of shows you, you know, what happened with the valuation, and then what happened with the property tax. So it, it will just then kind of show you how we've kind of worked our way back down over the last couple of years and have gotten back down to the levy at where we're at right Lancaster County's percentage of a City of Lincoln taxpayer. On here, you will see that no doubt the school system is a little over 61%. Lancaster County takes up about 13.16% of the overall levy for a City of Lincoln taxpayer. Okay, next one. This one here is just kind of showing property tax funds, and this is where we talked earlier about how much of our budget is really kind of property tax driven. And so you'll see here in this nice little, I don't even know what color that is, but property tax is at about 57.21%.
Mustard.
Yeah, okay. So that will show you at 57.21%. The one thing that I'd also, you know, throw on top of that is the other tax, which is at 11.66, that's really going to be your inheritance tax and your motor vehicle tax. You throw the fund balance that's at 10.5%, you will see that when you add those three up, that makes up a huge percentage, and it really kind of shows you that, you know, the fees and stuff that we collect, even though it might seem like it's a big dollar amount, overall percentage, it's very minimal. And even if there were increases to some of those fees, it's not going to drive it, you know, one way or the other a whole lot. We're really, you know, we're really limited to the tax side, and that drives a lot of stuff with us. Okay, so what do we spend that property tax money on? This is just kind of a breakdown of dispersments by function. So I split out public safety between law enforcement and other, but when you combine them, you get around 40% of going to public safety. You know, public works, there's a lot of our bridge and roads out there, and then you'll just kind of see, you know, general government, that's going to be, you know, that's going to be the treasurer, the assessor, the clerk, you know, those types of items. You'll just kind of see the breakdown of where that money is going to. Last few slides that I've got is just kind of more of a breakdown of, you know, the funds within. The general fund really drives the property tax side of things, but when you take a look, we've probably got 25 different funds that are out there, and those are all set up for specific purposes and stuff like that. So the last slide that I'm going to show you is the additional staff that we talked about, the 11 additional staff. On this slide, it will just show the different positions that have been approved, along with the dollar amount for this year's budget, as well as the staggering of those positions in. So for example, if you take a look at the county engineer, you'll see those two positions are going to be hired January 1st. You'll see the intern position with human services, where we talked about, that's going to be covered by Keno. A couple of these, you know, have a little bit of grant money attached to them also. One of the position also ends in December, so it's just to kind of get it through part of the year, but this is just kind of the breakdown to allow you to see what the positions are and when they'll be coming in to affect this year's budget. Other than that, if you've got questions or anything like that, I'd be more than willing to try to answer them.
Questions for Dennis. Thank you, Dennis.
Yep, you bet.
All right, we will open up the public hearing to others who want to testify on the proposed Anyone?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that somebody about to give the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Patrick Condon, C O N D O N, with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I thought I would come up and just say a few words in regards to the increase in our staff at the county attorney's office, the three positions that we are in the budget for this year. I did in my presentation earlier, you know, point out some things to the county, to the board members. Just to kind of refresh, I did bring a few of those, I believe those are on, they are available, they were, PowerPoint was given to the county board at the time. You know, the thing is, between 2010 and 2016, we've seen an increase in the county and the population. The United States increased during that time was about 4.9%, Nebraska was about 4.7% increase, and Lancaster County was 9.8% increase. So we've seen an increase in the population in Nebraska, and in particularly in Lancaster County. And in that regards, with that, there comes increases in public safety. In that time, during that time period from 2010 to 2017, I believe, and also has, the sheriff is here, I believe they have some increases in their deputies. The police department has increased their staff. The district court went from seven to eight courts in 2011. The public defender, I think, has added two or three attorney positions, an investigative slot, and a social worker over those time periods. And we, the Lancaster County Attorney's Office, under Joe Kelly and myself as the chief deputy, were able to hold our increases, but now we're in the point where we need those. One of the other things that I did show the board previously was the percentages here of the increases as to the overall budget. And that is, in 2010, the county attorney's, excuse me, the county attorney's budget was 6 million, just over 6,600,000. The revenue was 1,400,000, so for a total of 5,205,000, just a little over that. In 2017, the budget was $7,372,847, and the county revenue, the county attorney's revenue was $1,795,990. And so for a total increase of 5,576,857. That is over the seven years there, that's a 300, a little over a 370, I believe, $371,000 increase, or a little over a $51,000 increase in budget over those seven years. So the county attorney's office has really, I think, been a very good steward of the money, and now we need to increase some of those positions. One of the positions that we really took interest in was the mental health attorney. Our mental health attorney, right now, we have one attorney that does mental health for the county, and that, when I began, I started in one of the areas that I did was the mental health attorney. And when I did that position, it was a half-time, half-day attorney, or half-day slot, where we would go out to the regional center and handle the mental health hearings. That has now increased to two half-days at the minimum. Sometimes they go into a full day if the hearings go into the afternoon. So there is a large increase in that area. Also, you know, the stepping up initiative that this board has agreed to go with, and I think that's a great initiative, to try to keep people out of the, people with mental illnesses out of the jail and get them services that they need. We are also working with the judiciary committee, with the Supreme Court, and working on problem-solving courts. One of those is the mental health court. I do think that, you know, eventually, we will be up and going with that, but that takes resources from the state and also perhaps even another judge in this district to handle that mental health court. I think we're a couple of years off on that. We have started our own pilot program of the mental health diversion, trying to divert people basically into a, not a standard diversion, we also have just standard diversion, but the mental health diversion actually sets them up with a mental health provider that kind of watches them throughout their time on diversion, connects them up with services, and then kind of hopefully gets them into a position that when they're done with that diversion area, they can have services already established in the community. So we're hoping that through the, with the use of the mental health attorney, we can kind of better coordinate those services. Also, I anticipate, or what I'm looking for with the mental health attorney, is also to be able to take care of our drug courts, which has a mental health aspect to it. Our drug court is very good program, it's been running now for a number of years, has very good participation and a very good outcome. Our vets court, we just started, again, those tie in mental health services, so it's important to do that. And then also just assist the attorneys. We've seen a large increase in the competency and to have somebody that can basically address these competency issues if attorneys need assistance with that. Our NRI, or not responsible by reason of insanity, if an individual is, has that finding, there is a review hearing that is set every year for that individual who is on and not responsible by reason of insanity. And those cases can go on for decades and have gone on for decades. And so to have an attorney that can be familiar with the, what has gone on in the past with those individuals, I think would be very helpful, not only to the court, but also to the individual itself. And then just, you know, the thing is, is because we have the state penitentiary in our jurisdiction, a lot of those individuals, when they are released from the penitentiary, we get notice that, especially on sex offenders, we get notice that they are being released into the community and a determination of whether or not we want to file a petition to have them found to be a mentally disordered sex offender. So we have, and this mental health attorney would assist in doing that, doing that job and taking that on and reviewing all those individuals that are being released into the community, so we can try to assure the community that we are watching those individuals and we know who's going to be in the community and to keep the community safe. So that's one of the other things that we're hoping that that attorney would be asked to take on that responsibility. Right now, we have an attorney that's handling the mental health, but it's also a part-time, basically, he's doing that along with our domestic violence docket, and it's just, it's like several of our dockets, it's just too much for the one attorney, and I really think if we have a mental health attorney, better able to deal with those individuals and with those dockets. The second position, and I'll just stop there. I don't know if anybody has any questions in regards to the mental health attorney.
Thank you. Are there questions for the county attorney about the additional positions provided in the budget? Thanks for being here, Pat. Appreciate it.
I can go out on the other ones if they have any questions on the sexual assault one that we also had, and also our investigator. Again, the sexual assault attorney, I think, is an important addition to our office. That's one that's going to be paid with some of the grant money. We are seeing, the Lincoln Police Department is seeing an increase in rape and sexual assaults, and I think, again, as I mentioned to the board, we do have individual, we do have the state lab that is moving to a true allele DNA system. They're also going to be doing YSTR testing, which will, again, I think, add to the evidence that we have to present on sexual assault cases, and we will see an increase in those filings. So that was the reason for that position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there others that want to testify on the proposed budget?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that somebody about to give the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff.
Me too.
I wanted to comment just briefly on the three employees that we had requested from the board earlier this year. Last year, in 2017, we had developed a plan to increase our district patrol force by six, so six deputies in six years, and six deputies provides one 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week position. So all of the other positions we have added over the last 30 years or so have all been specialty positions, either school resource officers, narcotics, electronic evidence, task forces of one nature or another. And so this really is the first time we've increased our street patrol force in a number of years. So this is the second year of that plan. It just goes to say, I think, the increased population that Mr. Condon had mentioned provides for increased workload overall for us. Although the Lancaster County's rural population that we serve for police services tends to have a seesaw effect, the population of the county rural areas increases, it gets annexed, increases, gets annexed. So our rural population that we serve has maintained pretty static over the years with that 90-10 percentage split between city-county. But it's the complexity of the crimes that we are working, the number of corners investigations that we handle are based upon total county population, and the court security positions that we have also are contingent upon total county population. So that was the reasoning for the increase, the request for the additional deputy sheriff. We also, in consultation with the budget fiscal officer, made a decision that we needed to increase, or needed to add an account clerk to our fiscal management of our office. We currently have one person handling the finances for our office. Having one person there is problematic, that person should leave or something of that nature, and it also doesn't allow for any checks and balances that are really necessary. So with that, we ask for a second account clerk for a couple of different reasons. One, the intake and the increase in forfeited assets that are really time-consuming, and the reporting requirements are quite extensive. And then just our normal intake of monies from civil process accounts and grant funding and those kinds of issues. And then a part-time, full-temporary, full-time temporary supervised position in our civil process, which is a retired deputy sheriff, who his position will end at the end of this year. We needed to fund it from July 1 to December 31st. So those are the three positions that we had presented to the board earlier this year.
Okay, any questions for the sheriff? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Any other testifiers on the proposed budget?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Joe Nygro, Lancaster County Public Defender. I also wanted to speak about our request for additional personnel. Our overall budget, I think, is a 2.1% increase, and 89% of that is salaries. That does include a 5% increase we negotiated with the city for reimbursement for representing people charged with city misdemeanors. Our office cannot control the number of cases filed. The number of felonies, especially drug possession cases, has really exploded over the last three years or so, and we have internal workload standards that keep our caseload manageable. When we reach our limit each month, we file overload motions, and if we cannot take a case, then the courts appoint outside counsel who bill by the hour. And in the last fiscal year, we filed overload motions in 719 felonies and 208 misdemeanors. When we reach 101 felonies, it saves the county money if we add staff. A felony at felonies, it saves the county money if we add staff. A felony attorney can handle 120 cases in a year. Um, entry-level attorney salary and benefits is $96,095. So each felony attorney, uh, saves the county $18,910. Uh, based on those overload numbers, we could add six attorneys and it would save the county money. Now, in our proposal, we asked for two attorneys. The proposed budget here adds one, and that will ultimately reduce the legal cost to the county. Um, the proposed budget also includes one paralegal. We've had five paralegals for 15 years. The number of attorneys has grown from 18 to 23 in that time, and obviously it looks like it's going to increase one more. Our paralegals are stretched thin. Uh, they're limited to 40 hours a week. If they can't complete tasks, then that's going to fall on the attorneys. Uh, we've requested, uh, one paralegal, and starting salary and benefits for that is $68,990. Paralegals interview clients, they file motions, they perform a variety of important tasks in our representation. This will help us to maintain the quality of representation for, that, that our office is known for, and I would urge you to approve the proposed budget with the increased staff. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the public defender? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Other testifiers?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. So apparently we're not ladies first today. I just wanted to give my peers some grief. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Um, I am requesting, um, two additional positions this year. Uh, we've actually had a reduction of 13 positions in the county engineering department in the last five years. Um, in FY17 and FY16, I added an engineer one each of those years in order to modernize our workflow. Um, this year I am requesting, uh, a, and we haven't quite decided, uh, what to call it yet with, with HR, a director of operations, a chief of staff, um, an assistant county engineer. And so, uh, Sarpy County, Douglas County, and other counties that are much smaller than our organization have set their organizations up this way, uh, and it helps projects flow much more efficiently. Sadly, on mornings like this morning, when I'm down here, um, at the county commissioners' meeting, I'm not overseeing my operation of over 100 employees. And so, it's really important that we have this position, so that we have some continuity of oversight, um, over the operation. Uh, the second position, um, that we are requesting be added is a tech two. We also are going to have to do some defining of what that position really is. Uh, over the last five years, I have eliminated two positions from our rideaway department, uh, two technicians from our GS department, an engineering tech two, and an engineering aide. And so, uh, modern engineering workflows actually combine their survey positions with their rideaway positions with their GS positions. And so, um, we're going to be looking to see what that combo position, uh, looks like. I, I know that we need it, and, um, we really need that person that can meld those positions together. Um, in addition to that, uh, we are looking at our construction engineer position, which was an engineer four. I believe this position can be replaced with a construction manager that doesn't necessarily need to be a licensed engineer, um, who would fall in that engineer four category, and that could also, um, give us some savings on our budget. And so, as we continue to look at these things and move forward, that is what we're looking at. Um, in addition, I would like to thank the board for recognizing the extreme needs that I do have in county engineering, and with the additional, um, allocation that is going into our bridge fund, this will allow us to, uh, put M164, which is, um, currently closed, um, that's kind of in the south, uh, west quadrant of the county, and Y181 that's been closed for about two and a half years, that is in the southeast quadrant of our county. And so, these are both important structures. I have had, um, local farmers, uh, tell me how important it is to have reliability of our system and the ability to get through, and so this will be really important to our constituents.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the county engineer? Commissioner Avery?
Um, Pam, you are asking for several positions, some of which you don't even know the, the title. Do you know what the person would be doing?
So I, you know, we haven't defined what the title is. Um, there's been some debate on it. I would really call it, in the other counties, it's called a deputy engineer. Uh, during the budget process, I know that there were members of the board who asked me not to call it a deputy engineer, so, um, so I backed off from that. Uh, I have received some feedback, in particular from the transportation task force, who is recommending this position, by the way, in their report, uh, in their draft report, that, uh, to call this position a chief of staff, uh, makes it more political than it maybe should be. So, yes, um, I'm, we, we have, we are in the process of defining what this job will do. Um, however, what the title is, um, so, sometimes we, we seem to, uh, mess around with the titles a little bit, so I don't have a title.
Well, you just admitted you're, you're still trying to figure out what they're going to do. Don't you think you ought to already be there before you come to us and ask for the, uh...
This position is important to my staff. This position will mimic positions that already exist in Douglas and Sarpy County. Do I have a position, do I have a definition of it to present to you at this moment in time? I don't, but I will prior to, um, prior to, and, uh, prior to hiring that position or putting it out even for advertising. We have a process here at the county in which I have to go through the HR department. Um, last week I was told that will probably take two to three months. And so, although I know what I want the position to be, uh, I am not a silo, and I need to work with HR to define it appropriately.
Well, you're confusing me. You said that you know what it's going to do at one point, and then you say, well, we're still working on that. At another point, which is...
Because it has to be defined through HR. By the way that we set up the county, I am not allowed to just define the position and advertise the position. I am coordinating currently with HR to define the position.
So you're confident we're going to say yes?
Commissioner Shore?
In that this is a new position, does it necessitate going in front of the Personnel Policy Committee? Is that part of what the delay will be? Because it's a new position and definitions and job duties will be outlined at that time?
That is correct.
Other questions for the county engineer? Thank you, Pam. Any other testimony on the proposed budget? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and remind the public that this was our public hearing on the proposed budget, but as part of our regular way of doing business, all, we wanted all five commissioners to be present in order to vote on the proposed budget, and we have set a special meeting for this Thursday, August 28th at 8:00 AM in room 113 of the county city building in order, sorry, it's on the 30th?
Today's the 28th.
Sorry. Thank you. On the 30th, Thursday this week at 8:00 AM in order to, uh, vote on the final budget. With that, Mr. Clerk, let's proceed with new business.
5A is a resolution in a matter of exceeding the budget of restricted funds limit for the 2017-2018 fiscal year by an additional 1%.
This is the Dennis show all morning.
Yeah, it's, it's getting close. Um, okay, the additional 1%. Um, every political subdivision has to, has to deal with a lid on restricted funds, which really basically means everybody can bring in so much property tax and state aid in a given year. This lid was set up back in 1998 with a, a growth, an allowable growth of 2.5% each year, plus an additional 1% if approved by the supermajority vote of the, of the board. So, um, this resolution is asking for that additional 1%. The 1% allows the base amount to grow, which doesn't automatically mean that we're going to utilize it, because right now, we will have an unused restricted funds authority of about $16 million. So, that $16 million is not being used this year, but somewhere down the road, whether it's five years, whether it's 10 years, um, if the base amount, to me, if the base amount doesn't grow at the most that it can, it could cause us trouble somewhere down the road. So, um, we don't make any decisions really based off the lid. We go through our regular budget process. We determine how much property tax we're going to need, and then I come back and I tell you, here's how it fits into the lid. Now, if we were doing it, well, here's what the lid allows us to do, then that's a different story. But to me, um, I just feel that this additional 1% just makes sense, so that we're not sitting here one day, um, when we're needing to make a decision and not being able to make it because the lid's, um, stopping us from.
Okay. Any questions for Dennis?
I will move approval of the resolution.
Don't we do this every year?
I, yes, I come and ask for the additional 1% every year.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. With a motion and a second, are there any other questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5B is a resolution in a matter of the final allocation of levy authority of all political subdivisions subject to Lancaster County levy authority.
Okay, last one, and then I'm leaving. So, th- this is the annual resolution where we allocate out, um, up to the 15 cents that is allowable, allowable per statute. Fire districts, ag societies, the RTSD, um, those what are classified as miscellaneous subdivisions come to the county board and say, this is, is the amount of property tax that we need to operate our budgets for this next fiscal year. So, we look at those numbers, we make sure that they're, that they're within the, the allowable 15 cents, and then this resolution goes back out to those subdivisions saying, okay, yes, we can fit you in the 15 cents, now go out and finalize your own budgets. So this is what this resolution is doing, and it is, you know, it is all within the allowable 15 cents. So this will be just information to let those subdivisions move on with their own budget process.
Okay. Any other questions for Dennis about this?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. D is federal equitable sharing agreement and annual certification report for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office regarding equitable sharing activity of drug forfeiture funds for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018.
Good morning. Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. Uh, this is a report that we file with the, uh, federal government, um, each and every year for our, uh, federal, um, drug forfeiture funds. Uh, in addition, um, there's a state form that's filed as well for state. But, um, you know, this, this covers two funds, uh, the justice, which is our seizures, uh, through DA or any other federal agency, and then treasury fund, which are seizures through homeland security investigations, which is part of our, which we are in a task force with. So those are the two funds that are, um, itemized on this report. Any questions you might have, I'd be glad to answer them.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is a contract with Bob and Don's Plumbing for annual requirements that backflow preventers. The contract is for a four-year term effective upon execution by all parties. The cost accounted is not to exceed $9,200.
Move approval.
Second.
With a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
No.
Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5F is a contract with GBS Corp. to provide annual supply county court file folders. The contract shall be effective, uh, September 24th, 2018 through September 30th, uh, excuse me, through September 23rd, 2019. The cost accounted is not to exceed $9,900.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is change order number two to county contract C-18-220 with Constructors, Inc. for additional resurfacing on Roca Road between South 46th Street and South 54th Street, uh, for an increase of $127,313.18.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, as you may or may not remember, um, we have resurfaced 54th Street this summer from Saltillo to Roca Road, and then we're in the process, hopefully if it can stop raining, of, uh, paving 54th Street south of Roca Road all the way into Hickman, which is super exciting. But as we went to do that, um, once we got out to site, we noticed that this third mile of Roca Road, um, as it connects to 54th, is in super bad condition. And this summer, with the excessive heat, it has really deteriorated quickly. And so, while we're there, uh, we're going to go ahead and add this in to, um, this year's asphalt contract as a change order, so that we can go ahead and not have to pay a separate mobilization for this third of mile. And so it's a very efficient, um, way to conduct business. Um, but in this case, it needed to be done with a change order.
Commissioner Shore?
A question. Do you have any idea on timing on this project? We see a lot of traffic coming into Roca during pumpkin season, and do you have any idea how long the project would take?
Um, we are still coordinating with the contractor because the schedules have slid. Um, the long soaking rains we've had the last couple of weeks have really left the surface, um, of many of our sites mucky, for lack of a better term. And so, um, I know these schedules have been shifting in two-week increments. Um, I can, I can check, and I will let you know. As we always do, uh, with these sites these days, um, the county engineering department on our official county engineering site puts out a Twitter notice, um, when we're closing or working on a road. We push it to the Google Maps, street closure map that is shared with the City of Lincoln, um, on the city-county website. And in addition, we push it to the traffic app Waze, so that if you are in the area and the road is closed, Waze will reroute you around the closure to the detour that we have sent them. And so, um, I, I think we've come a long way in informing people about the roads.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. With a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H, our contracts provide annual repair service for construction and purpose-built equipment. Terms to contracts are one year from the date of execution, with the option for three additional one-year renewals. The cost accounted is not to exceed $100,000 for all contracts. Um, and this includes Accor Diesel Repair LLC, Brown Heavy Equipment, and Rose Equipment, Inc.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number six, consent items. Amendments to the following contracts. County contract C-17-754 with Protech Central, Inc. for annual service, fire alarm, panel inspection, testing, and repair. The amendment renews the contract from September 19th, 2018 through September 18th, 2019. The cost accounted is not to exceed $500. County contract C-17-755 with Total Fire and Security for annual service, fire alarm, panel inspection, testing, and repair. The amendment renews the contract from September 19th, 2018 through September 18th, 2009, 2019. The cost accounted is not to exceed $1,200. County contract C-18-402 with MTG Management Consultants LLC for consultant services, CGIS evaluation. The amendment extends the contract from September 22nd, 2018 through October 13th, 2018. There is no additional cost to the county. Rideaway contracts with the following. Daniel Coughlin, Northwest 84th Street and West Bluff Road in a total amount of $199. This is for two contracts. Galen R. Spath, trustee of Galen R. Spath Revocable Trust, Northwest 84th Street and West Bluff Road in a total amount of $223. This is for two contracts. Contract with Dr. Feelgood to provide annual service, fuel tank maintenance and service. The contract shall be effective September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019. The cost accounted is not to exceed $20,000.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number seven, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business... Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, we do so at this time.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? Seeing none, please continue with the agenda.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a meeting on Thursday, August 30th, 2018, at 8:00 a.m. in the Bell Oxford Studio of the county city building regarding the Lancaster County budget for fiscal year 2018 through 2019. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, August 30th, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bell Oxford Studio of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can reach at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.